Okay, let me do the slideshow.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sean Parks. I'm your commissioner, your commissioner from District Two, that's South Lake. So it's great to be here at the North Lake Tea Party. Talking about, okay, thank you. Talking about some very important things tonight. This is a similar presentation that I gave to the South Lake Tea Party now called the 912 Project. And introductions, I guess probably what's most important for you to know about me and some of you know this, I know. I said this a lot on the campaign trail, but probably the most important thing that I'd like to share is just that I'm a man that my most important things to me are my Christ-centered faith, go to church in South Lake. I have a beautiful wife, her name's Ivy, three kids, Reagan, yes, she's named after Ron Reagan. She is 11 years old and going into fifth grade and I'm very thankful that we have Bill absolutely right on track with that policy because I'm scared to death of what she could be exposed to next year. So my daughter Willow, who's in Cypress Ridge Elementary, and my little boy Eli. So that kind of sums up everything that's most important for me when I'm not a commissioner. So what I wanted to do tonight was talk about budget, what's going on, and also talk about economic development. Times are very difficult, as you all know. As I've said, why the economic development part to this presentation? Because as I've said, we can only cut our way out of this mess that we're in so much. We have to grow jobs, and I mean very clearly want to say not jobs in the county or any government, but private sector jobs, as Marco Rubio said, Rubio said, trying to create more taxpayers. We are not the federal government, I'll be very clear with that. We cannot borrow money to keep operations going like the feds do. In fact, as I will talk later on in my presentation, the feds and the state quite frankly have handed a lot down to us that make it tougher for us. We are where the rubber meets the road, literally. We pave your roads, we represent you by paving the roads, making sure the EMS shows up, fire, police, the sheriff, although you elect the sheriff. We fund that budget, we provide those, the local services, the quality of life that you deal with on a day-to-day. So that's why all that's important. Next, here's kind of a little presentation. This is, this quite literally is the same presentation advance, we'll attest that was given to the county commission. So that's what's kind of neat about this when we share with you what was presented. What we want to do is talk about workshops, some of the issues and challenges that I had talked about, budget strategies, analysis, summary, and where we're going to go this year with the budget. And then I'll tie in later on that economic development, next slide. Okay, this is kind of a summary of what we're at, where we're at right now. Fiscal year 2013, the budget that we are in now, the total budget is $381 million. General fund operating is $120 million. That's the number that's probably most important, that's the operating fund that we deal with. Countywide property values decreased 6.2% again. Lake EMS and fire rescue villages were kept at 2012 rates. General funds, stormwater parks, and roads, villages were proposed, proposed at the rollback, were proposed at a rollback rate, but if you remember, we voted to keep the rates at 2012 rates, keep them the same. Public lands, we did have to increase that a little bit because quite frankly that was a bond that's out there, we really didn't have a choice. We have to, the bond that was used to buy the primary sensitive lands approved by the voters in 2004, we had to adjust the military rate to keep making those payments on that bond that was approved by the voters, no choice. Budget was balanced with reductions, we did 5% last year, we did including constitutional officers, and we also, we also spent out of the your savings account the reserves. Here's a budget workshop recap, if you remember, during the last budget sessions in September, which is when our budgets are approved, we, the commission said, we really need to go out this coming year and be as accessible as possible, get out there and tell everybody about the situation they're in, try to encourage input. We decided that we would get started really early this year. Well, we did, we started December 4th, and we just had one budget wrap-up as of February 22nd. The question that I posed for you, those are the various topics, I won't go through them, but you can see they're very big, weighty issues. Parks, libraries, well, really constitutional officers, that was first. So the question that I have for you is, and these are during the day, so this is not a challenging question, but you know, were you involved? Can you be involved with the ones that are coming up? And yes, there'll be opportunities, there will be more, because we need to hear from This graph pictures as a thousand words. We have dropped some 34% values, it's what we're dealing with. The general fund is funded, that $120 million is funded out of mostly your property taxes. And so the problem is, we dropped 34% over the last, what, four years? And so that's pretty serious. Population has gone up, and in fact, even since the 2010 census, we've gained some 10,000 people in Lake County. And that's talking, it's, what are we, four years ago now? So that's pretty, pretty significant to deal with. Very important that we don't grow as fiscal conservatives, and we have, I believe, a very fiscally conservative board, that we do not grow the size of government, that we keep it as efficient and limited as possible. But we have dropped a number of positions. Other counties aren't doing this. They're talking about maintaining positions, some are even now talking about potential pay raises. Again, it's that flipping of, are they going to continue to grow? So we have not, I think we have demonstrated this, not just me, but even before when I was elected. Do you want to?
Just a fast question. This chart is very good at showing how many positions have been cut back in the county operations. What I would ask is that you create one just like it for the sheriff to show that he has not reduced his staffing anywhere near at the same level.
Very good question.
Same for the dollar amounts, too.
Yes, and let's talk about, let's talk about the constitutional officers here in a minute. But we have, we have dropped 152 positions out of the general fund in the last four years, because we have to, we've just been trying to make do, and they're having to do more. Here, here you see, again, that population's grown. Commissioner Sullivan, about two months ago, asked for some data when we were talking about EMS services. And they, staff presented a very interesting chart, I wish I had it with me tonight, but the short of it is that we are, as the population continues to grow, even just a few short years ago, 10 years ago, EMS calls, we had somewhere around 22,000 calls for EMS services. Now, coming up into 2014, we are expected to have somewhere around 43,000 calls, 43,000 calls in EMS. And we're talking about cutting them, which there are some inefficiencies there, and we can get to that a little bit later, that's maybe a whole other night to talk about EMS. But that's a question, I mean, that's pretty serious, it kind of shows you what we're dealing with. Assumptions. So we assumed, going forward with the budget modeling, that in 2013, we, well, we, somewhere, we projected somewhere between 6 and 10%, so we actually got a 6.2% as you see there. We are assuming for this year coming up, again, in September, for 2014, a 3% decrease. We hear that it may not be quite 3%, but we are definitely going to assume that 3% to be conservative. So moving forward, and you see the assumptions in 2015, maybe we level off 2016, a 1% increase, 17, 2% increase in property values. As you see, that we had to drop, our fiscal year we did expenses, we dropped them 5%. And at least in 2014, we are expecting another 5% decrease. This is another graph, thank you. This is, just assuming that same scenario, and maybe you can press it right here, a little number will pop up. There you go. About $17.4 million gap between revenue and expenses, that's what we're dealing with. So we have to make that up, but some way, you know, we pull out or we add to the savings account again, the reserves, or we cut back some more, and we're going to do both. Another scenario, same scenario, you see your savings account, our savings account, the reserve just absolutely plummeting because we're pulling from that. We are very, this board is very concerned about increasing village rates in these tough times, knowing, and I saw some of the data that came to me from property appraiser, literally, it was too late, almost too late, but literally the day that we're voting on no trade, and the numbers of people that that would have affected. So we're very sensitive to that, we don't, I think, if I say this, it's fair to say, we don't want to do that if at all possible. So, but you see our, our reserves absolutely just bottoming out, almost in the negative. Legally, statutorily, by the state of Florida, we can't, we can't even get to that position. We have to have 5% minimum reserves. With the budget assumptions that we're assuming, we'll be at about 7% about this coming year.
So, quick question. You've got two different colors, the blue and the gray. You've got the one, this light curve down of gray that terminates at 2012. How does that relate to the other reserve?
The gray, the one, the lighter line, see, if I, believe I remember the presentation correctly, that was when there was a different budget policy, so they were, we were holding that curve to keep the minimum, what was it, 20, 15%?
Yeah, that's right. Jimmy Connor's 15%. And then you dropped it to 10%, didn't you?
We dropped it to a range of between 7 and 10%.
And that's what the light bar is?
That's what the lighter one is. The light bar is actually, the, that's just the range, that's just highlighting kind of like the danger zone. So, and you'll see that if we don't do something, we'll be at 6.1, which will actually be under our low, underneath our budget policy, even that we changed last year. So. Okay, and that's what I just said, next slide, there you go, see, we have 6.1%. And we're at 13.7% right now, that was that other number that popped up, we're at 13.7% right now. Okay, so the assumptions include that we have to do something because we're going to breach the 7% barrier again, which is a new, which is a new, new policy, which translates to going beyond the 5% reduction. So now you're hearing us, maybe some of the commissioners talk about asking 6% across the board, from departments, give or take, there's going to be situations that are going to vary, but, and then 6% for our constitutional officers. I have a graphic at the end that I think will summarize all this, show you the situation that we're in. Quite nicely.
What are you thinking of with constitutional laws?
Good question. Constitutional officers, meaning sheriff orders, by the constitution of the state of Florida, they are elected positions separate. Gary Borders is chief law enforcement officer. Interestingly, I didn't know this, but the reason why they're, one of the reasons why they're elected is, and kept separate is, in the 20s and 30s in Florida, apparently, there were a lot of counties that were acting as their own little states, and weren't, were not necessarily abiding or enforcing laws of the state constitution of Florida. And so they made that separate so that county commissioners couldn't enact their own laws and try to be their own sheriff. So they're kept separately. The supervisor of elections is another obvious reason you want to have that separate. Clerk of Courts is our balance, they check what we do, check the budgets, they have auditing ability, specifically when we request, they check the numbers, or that checks and balances to us, so.
And the property?
Property appraiser, absolutely, because obviously, it would be, one would think that it'd be nice if the county commission made up their own property values, probably emergered, without any problems. And tax collectors as well, yeah. That's why they're elected, so. Okay, issues and challenges, and uncertainty with property values in Adhulor. We have not had employee raises in four years, and that is an issue and concern because we do have good employees. I know it's, sometimes it's kind of, we're the butt of a joke about inefficiency, and there are inefficiencies in government, and we are out there to change that. But we do actually have very good employees. I mean, I have been, gone out of the round building at 6:30 at night and had people in our economic department still up there working, and they want to work extra, they want to work hard, try to make a difference. We're worried that is, it could be a concern about losing some of the talented people that are thinking perhaps more like us, and trying to be efficient, work hard. So we're going to deal with that. The future impacts of rising health benefit costs, absolutely, with Obamacare. Reviewing risk management program and future insurance costs, that's, we're looking at that right now. Legislative action, unfunded mandates. Imogen Siegel now has to enforce or carry out new election laws. That costs, costs you money to do that extended voting, and we fund that, so that is a direct cost, it comes right out of the general fund. Mr. McKee, have sailed off a number of years from trying to, for the new law that requires that, to the counties do driver's licenses. There's, you can no longer do that, so we will have that additional cost of doing driver's licenses at the county level, and that additional cost will be incurred upon us. There are some changes to FRS contribution rates that could happen, you never know what's going to happen with that.
What is FRS?
Florida retirements.
On the driver licenses, you mean making them available at the clerk's office and the DMV?
Making them?
Tax collector's office?
You go to the tax collector's office to get your license renewed, do the new driver's license. Yeah, it's no longer, it won't be at that place in Nassau, Tula.
Oh, okay. It's not going to be at the Tula?
I mean, I don't know what he's doing, it may stay there, but I think he's looking for a facility, I don't know what exactly he's doing, that may be something for another night's discussion, actually, to see what he's going to do with that. I know, I know one thing, though, he will, he'll provide very good service to everybody. I mean, it's just amazing, people actually feel, find, are somewhat cheery when they go in there, when they're paying taxes or asking tax questions, but, but he does a good job. He's very efficient. Assetul Fuel Remediation, that's a piece of land the county owns, near Assetul, it's near Landville. There is $400,000 with the cleanup cost because there's a leaky gas tank where a plume is, is migrating to the soil, towards water bodies. Nothing we can do about it, long before, long before I was on the board. But it's $400,000 out of general fund that we have to pay to clean it up this year. The Tivary's Fire Assessment, they've asked for money to provide fire protection for the round building and all the government buildings here. Outstanding FEMA invoice, which we found out may get taken care of. Reserves, and by the way, I said this at a recent BCC meeting, reserves are important because I don't know what will happen with FEMA. If a major disaster hits Lake County, you know, how are we going to, what are, what's our cash available for daily use? And that's why reserves are important, because we may not be able to, now FEMA could come in and reimburse us for cleanup and extra ambulances and whatever happens, but you know, is that going to be guaranteed? I don't know. So personally, the reserves are important for that, to me, for that reason alone. Requests for those, requests for constitutional offices and judicial support. Courthouse is costing several hundred thousand dollars now to provide security for the courthouse. So we will be paying that out of, out of general fund. And now, what has been pointed out at our commission meeting, and this is good news, Sheriff Borders has, is moving forward with outsourcing that, which I think is a really good sign. I know, I know Commissioner Connor has said, yeah, it's a pretty big sign. He has a lot of history around here. It is, it is a big sign that you have somebody that's talking about outsourcing. 2014 strategies, what are we going to do to meet those challenges? Again, property values are going to go down, how do we, but how are we able to fund the level of service that we need? Explore the infrastructure of sales packs, is there a way to use any of that to possibly assist us with general fund? It's been talked about before, we'll keep looking for that route. Continue to consolidate lease space, we had a good presentation, Vance was there recently, we have dramatically reduced lease space and property that the county owns, believe it or not. So we'll continue to long-term cut that, try to cut that expense. Valuated solid waste transfer, transfer right now, $3.5 million out of general fund goes in solid waste. If we were to become a true enterprise system where you, the user is paying completely out of a user fee for the trash pickup, we wouldn't have that subsidy out of general fund. We hope to get there at some point. And there are no, we're not going to keep reserves available for economic incentives, which, you know, that's an issue that we're going to deal with. If there's an opportunity to strike on something, that money may not be there, so. Currently, we've given the Lynx, the Lynx Bus in South Lake, South Lake County, Route 54 and Route 204. 54 is a four corners, we've cut that immediately, that was done a couple weeks ago. We have also worked with Lynx, we will not be paying for Route 204, which is five times a day, 10 times a day, actually, five trips, out of Claremont to downtown Orlando. We will not be funding that out of general fund. Lynx is going to pick that up. What was important to me is if, we've gotten, let me caveat that by saying, that's what they've said, when it's in writing, we'll see. Now, what I have said at the commission meeting is that we need to keep our ability to increase fares, because I don't want to pay out of general fund to make up the difference. We should raise fare box. I've actually talked to a lot of riders, those bar routes are actually quite, they're quite heavily used, believe it or not. A lot of people just like to get on bus and read, do whatever, go to sleep on their way to work and come back, that work in Orlando. They don't mind paying that, they don't even mind a route or two being, a trip or two being cut, they'll live with it, they just don't want the route cut. I think the good news is here is that we're going to get that expense out of our general fund, that's what you need to know, so. The bar graph, or the pie graph, I guess, says, also says a lot. You see the, out of that general fund, $120 million, the constitutional offices, 57% of it is funded. We have, we have very little control, the commission has very little control over that. Some of you know this, but on June 1st, we will get literally, quite literally, one or two pages from constitutional officers saying, here's our budget, approve it yes or no. We, because they're elected, and we, we all hired them, we don't get, the commission doesn't get to delve in to detail into their budget, we can ask them for it, they don't have to, they don't have to give much detail. Mr. McKee gives a lot of detail. I know Ms. Siegel does, too. The sheriff has not, and I know Vance has alluded to that, you'd like to see those details. You have as much power or more, I'm just, I'm just another voter, have as much power or more to ask for that detail as I do. So, 57% of that, so I don't, we can't, I can't make cuts and go into his budget or her budget and make those cuts, I can just approve up for him.
Do you have the split of the constitutional officers, how much of it is?
I don't, obviously not there, but I know sheriff orders is about 46 or 47%, I believe, of the 57. Of the 57%, yeah.
Has anybody ever said no, Sean?
It's been, not, not to my knowledge, in Lake County, there may be somebody who has some history that I don't know. In the state, yes, people have said no. The commission is usually, the commission moves, it's usually, it, I mean, it really does, they, it's just the way it is.
You can go to the governor.
June 1st is the deadline for them to submit their requests?
Correct.
All right, so they've already done their budget workup and have all their supporting detail in order to calculate their figures by the time they produce their unit.
They're probably working on it, obviously, right now.
Well, I mean, by June 1st, it'll happen, in order to be able to do the math.
Correct.
So if we were to do a Chapter 119 public records request en masse, asking sheriff orders to provide the detail utilized by them, of course, they would have to have paper records in order to be able to generate, or digital records in order to generate the numbers, to add them up.
Vance, have you asked them?
I have, I've gotten the budget, they don't put it on the website, you have to go through John Harrell, and you ask it, and it probably takes two weeks, they, and keep reminding him, and then they'll come up with it, and I think even, you go down and I think Marilyn, you talked to him at one time, didn't you? She went down and grilled him.
I got one, but all I got was five pages of nothing. With the total on the bottom, which was not the amount that the county reported, and I, Regina Preacher was here at the time, and I said, how come these are different numbers? And she said, because the sheriff doesn't count his buildings. We have that, all that expense for his buildings and his, and his utilities, and the sheriff never thinks to count any of that.
There's no oversight on him, there's no operational audits for efficiency affecting this economy, there's no public hearings.
He charges the dollar a day.
And we elect him.
Well, yeah, you do, and, and I think you, you should ask for the detail on that, especially with the condition. And I'll say this, you know, sheriff orders will have, you know, will have some good arguments, I mean, he's reduced traffic fatalities because he's funded a, a, a traffic enforcement. Maybe some of us have been victims of speeding tickets, but that's with that unit that, that, you know, they go out and do the traffic enforcement, and there is a noticeable drop-off in traffic fatalities. There's map bus, you know, on a regular basis now. That does cost money. But, I mean, I do think, yeah, I mean, I think there's, there should be some more, there should be some more disclosure on that, answering some of the questions, absolutely do. I mean, you can go, y'all know, I mean, Vance goes through the budget like line by line on them almost, yeah, so you know, you can get that from us, because we, we're required to do it, and that, that's.
They're, they're the best at providing information, all the directors provide it, it's just the agenda, the wording sometimes is quirky.
Yeah, and you know, we're, we're working on that, it's never, we're not perfect. So yes, there is, and sheriff orders will, will tell you, though, you know, hey, I've got some success. We don't know what's going to happen, let's just, like, obviously, we'll wait, we'll wait first, we're all waiting for that date, that's when the values will come in and budgets are due, so. The analysis, summary of this part of the presentation, and I want to go into economic development for a few minutes, is revenues, we are going with those conservative projection of revenues, another 3%, a 3% drop. The expenses were 120 in 2013, 111.4 million, and that's to maintain the 7.1% reserve level, just above our minimum policy. That increases, that equates to a decrease of 8.6 million, that's the $8.6 million number that you hear us talk about. These are some, these are ways that we're going to do it. Constitutional officers reductions, 4 million, so sheriff orders is probably about 3 something million of that. Other county departments, we're, we're cutting our county departments, another million and a half. And I, I can say with great confidence, we have cut probably our county departments, Mr. McKee's done a lot more than anybody. We got people multitasking, we've, we've, they are watching their dollars write down paper clips. And I don't know how much more, quite frankly, they, that could be done to make a significant difference outside of hacking off major letters. So, and that would affect level of service.
Sean, is the detention center under judicial support, or is that under sheriff orders?
Correct. That's under judicial support, yeah, because we would provide that. Okay, let's go to the next slide. Mandatory critical items have been taken out of captulation. That's basically what we're saying, is that there's some things even within our own control, the BCC's 20-something million dollar budget, that we can't, that have to be, have to be left the way they are. So that's assuming that, but we're still going to make the 1.5 million, the 6%, which is the 6% that you see up there on the screen. And as was pointed out, any reduction in one part of the pie increases the contribution to the other. And as you've heard on my website say, I've said, we're all in this together, and that pie will demonstrate that we are all in this together, because everything is affected by the general fund. The matrix, I think, and I'm a, I'm a kind of a matrix kind of guy, come from an engineering and science background, I think this is pretty neat, because this summarizes it pretty well the situation that we're in. Constitutional across Adhulor below, if our values decrease 3%, and the constitutionals make the reduction of, right now, we would make a 6% reduction. With the status quo budget, that means if the constitutionals come in with the status quo budget, meaning, meaning sheriff orders, Bob McKee, everybody wants to keep the same budget that they had last year, we have to make a 13% reduction. And if they want to go with a 3%, 3% increase in their budgets, the constitutionals, sheriff orders included, we're looking at a 15% of reduction in county commission budget. Absolutely impossible, in my opinion, to make that at this point. Status quo, 0%, let's hope that we get 0% reduction in property values, we're looking at across the board 4%. 9%, they come in with the status quo, 12%, 3% increase. And if things just are kind of, if, if the economy's better than we thought, and values have increased, we get a 3% increase, we're only looking at a 2%, 5%, 8%, if they want to increase their budget 3%. I said a lot of percentages there. I said a lot of percentages there. I went through that kind of fast, but the point is, is that those are the bad numbers is that they don't, if they don't, the bad point of this is that they don't make, you know, if, they're going to have, if, if there's not a budget increase on the consti, or decrease in the constitutional officers, it's going to be, it's going to be very hard for us, the county commission. And they, and again, this is summarized, we are asking for 6% reduction in all board departments. All, all, all funds are, are status quo dependent upon revenue projections. And we're going forward, and we have, as Commissioner Campionas, our chair, has gone forward and met with constitutionals, asking for a 6% reduction.
Can you go back to the preceding matrix, please?
Sure.
So, the, the succeeding slide we just saw is based on the second column from the left.
Correct.
6%.
6%. Correct. Alright, yes. Okay, so, as I said at the top of the presentation, we can't, we can only cut our way out of this mess. What are we doing economically to increase growth, increase innovation, increase business, small business growth in Lake County, create more taxpayers? Well, we have been very aggressive, I think, and it's probably been summarized here before, what our business development efforts are. And we have regions now that are split up. Some of you have probably seen this. We have three regions in Lake County, north, central, and south. We have little mini economic development directors representing each of those regions, and they work with the cities to help them achieve their goals. And they also man the business opportunity centers. And the business opportunity centers are not just incubators. Incubators are, are places where businesses that are one and two man shops go to incubate, to grow, receive mentoring assistance, and grow. Hopefully, they are hiring more people, and then they are released out into the real world and continue to grow with all this knowledge and backing and support. The business opportunity centers are not just incubators. They are places where any business can go, any, any business. And this goes along with, and I can't stress this enough, what has been very important with this board is not necessarily going after the home run, not going after the 800-person job, the company that's going to bring in 100 jobs to Lake County, that is the home run. I mean, it's very hard to do that, but it's, the, the emphasis is on growing jobs locally, economic gardening. And I would just like to point out that one, I think, one, one tool that's been in place the last couple of years that I think is successful is the business opportunity centers. And we have success stories to point to. We are helping businesses, if you, if a small business needs to come in and doesn't need to, doesn't necessarily want to be a part of the incubation program, but they want to talk to somebody that's got business expertise and ask a question, even if it's just a little short 10 minute question, they can come in and for free receive that, that answer, that The business opportunity centers is one in Eustis, which is, I think, is going very well.
It is.
And there's one in South Lake, which we converted the old visitor center on 27. We turned that into the business opportunity center. So, it's an incubator, and, but it's also an assistance for our, our businesses, our fledgling businesses here, to come in and receive advice or, I mean, even if they want to come in and use the facts for a nickel, or, you know, with costs, make copies, they can come in and do that. And one success story that I have, and thus, thus the bag that I brought in, this is, this is kind of a cool, all-American, neat story that I just wanted to share with you. This is, it's the Green Light Fire Act, and it's a, it's a couple that lives in, they live in Montbird, and they came and basically started telling me about this company that they had formed. I believe he's a nurse and an esthetologist at South Lake Hospital, but they've had this dream, this American dream, to start their own business. And so, they had this idea, they're always outdoors camping with their kids, and they struggled, they struggled making campfires. So, they came up with this idea, I don't know, maybe around the campfire, maybe a few beers had something to do with it, but they thought, okay, what if we put a campfire in our bag, a complete campfire bag that anybody could start with one match or two matches and would, would have an instant campfire, a fire that they could use around the campfire to roast marshmallows, or to cook on, or just to enjoy. And so, believe it or not, they kind of came up with this scientific formula of what the perfect fire is and how it started, and it's in this bag. And, I mean, right down to drying the wood, kiln drying the wood to a certain dryness so that it starts right up and it, and it burns clean. And anybody can start it, even comes with a little, a couple matches that are in here. So, this company came to us and they said, I mean, I just, actually, I just kind of ran into them, and, you know, they were, they were struggling about how to get start, how to get to that next stage. And so, what they did was we, and this was in Claremont, Emily Thompson, one of our economic development directors, said, why don't you come by the business opportunity center? Let's go over your numbers, let's help you refine your business plan a little bit more. You're talking about, they were talking to us about, well, I want to invest $200,000 in this, in this furnace, this kiln, because I'm tired of paying somebody in Gainesville to do it. You know, I want to make sure though that I'm making the right investment and doing this properly. Well, we can do that. We matched them up with the experts. I'm not an expert in that, but we matched them up with the experts. We maxed them, matched them up with the marketing expertise. They, at that point, had gone off and were negotiating a contract with K O A nationwide. They've now achieved that contract. We, and just by, this is very simple ways, very simple ways of helping our local businesses. I mean, I personally have written a letter to the Lake Louisa State Park because they were giving them resistance. One of our own local businesses, State Park, didn't want to have them come and sell these on consignment. So, we're, you know, I've written a letter to them saying, hold on a minute, this is a local business. You can put 20 or 30 of these campfire bags in the front, sell them consignment, and give these guys an opportunity. We're going to try to get them into the, the State Park system. And, and that's just, you know, that's just what we're here to do, is to try to help our businesses grow. And I'm, I'm a big believer in taking those bold actions and doing everything we can because right now, it's extremely important that we grow our businesses, diversify our economy. We've been in so housing dependent, such a housing dependent based economy here in Lake County, that we can't go in that direction. Many of you remember when I was campaigning, the little graph I took around that showed all the, you know, the burden on the, on the homeowner, the tax burden. We've got to shift that more to, to our businesses by growing more businesses, not taxing them more, of course, but growing more businesses and getting that away from the homeowner. This is how we do it. We get these guys to grow and hire a couple of people, make that investment, feel comfortable about it, and put their kiln and their manufacturing facility here, and hire a few people, market, help them market it and take the risk, and get out there and live and fulfill the American dream, right here in Lake County. So, this is a pretty neat story. Who likes the outdoors?
Most.
Okay, because I only bought one of these, so maybe we could raffle this off.
How much do they retail for?
They insisted, you know, I believe it's either $4 or $6.
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah, I think they're, they're still working on their pricing. Yeah, that, that obviously will vary with the auction.
$6 or less, that's, uh.
Yeah.
Right.
They're very big, made in America. They're, and these folks were asking all kinds of questions when they came in. It was great. They were asking about, you know, taxes and business environment, and, you know, what, what workforce, and, and so, you know, it was a pretty neat experience for me, so we should be able, be able to help them. So, you should watch them, and watch them grow, so.
Who are the people that man these centers? I mean, are they hired or they volunteer?
They are hired. They're hired by, they are hired by the county. We hired them, yes. Emily Thompson's in South Lake, Adam Sumner's in Central, no wait.
Leesburg.
Leesburg, yeah. And, and Robert Chandler is in the Central, he was around there, and he's now our new director. So, he's going to be pulling double duty for a while.
Are they going to replace his slot because he moved up?
I think, I think.
Because he was Eustis, and the Eustis one.
I think we have to. I mean, you know, it's a touchy subject, hiring new people, but that's, that's one area, that's one area that, again, and I think I speak for the board, that we've got to try to keep our economic development funded, so. Yes, sir.
I have three or four questions for you, if you can indulge me. And it concerns me that governments, whether it be city, county, state, or federal, they seem to be in lockstep with the solving problems with methodology of 200 years, rather than trying to do something differently. Like, for example, number one, have you ever considered trying to solve your problems of budgets other than property tax? You know, eliminating property tax? Have you ever tried to get your district law enforcement, your towns and cities, consolidate fire departments and law enforcement? And redefine what is a fully staffed law, a firehouse? Have you considered changing the defined pensions for county employees? And then how about considering no more courthouses in Lake County?
Well, that's, I like to think.
Night court.
I mean, we sort of have night court, you know.
No, I agree. Hey, and I can say that was before I was on the commission.
I know, but you're there.
Yeah. Well, we have to deal with the security right now because of, and that was actually, the way it was designed, frustratingly enough, has contributed to its more expensive security requirements, so that's even more frustrating. Very good questions. Yes, you know, I've always been intrigued, would be maybe a mild way to put it, about the fair tax, if there was a way to do fair tax.
Amen, amen.
Yeah, there you go. The county. And the only way I can think of doing it other than short of changing some of our laws and, and maybe our constitution would be, you know, you just lower the, you lower the military all the way back to the minimum amount, maybe it's 0.1, but at the same time, to compensate for that, you would, you would increase any sales tax. And, but you'd have to get a referendum for that, and we already have one for the penny, for the infrastructure that funds roads. A third of it goes to roads, actually, six of it goes to roads, bear with me on this. A six of it goes to roads, a six of it goes to other county functions, a third of it goes to the cities, and a third of it goes to the school. So, you already, already have that in place.
There's something though that's very discouraging for young people as they work hard, build a house, and then 10 years want to improve that house by adding on to it, and then they are taxed so much that is exceeding what would be a house payment, and they don't want house payments. And somehow, that is patently unfair.
No, I, I agree. There's got to be a better way to do it. And, and it's going to take, you know, it's going to take some changes at the state, the state level, absolutely.
See, some of this could be done locally.
Well, I'm all ears. I'm all ears. And the fire, the fire and the consolidation of services, we are working on that, is very, these guys have kingdoms though, and on both sides, cities and county. And so, you know, you got to work with some of that a little bit. But we are trying to, you know, the moms, the parents, the grandparents, all they care about is who's going to get there first, and who can show up the quickest. And so, we're, we have that mindset, and we've got to get there. I think it's going to take a few years, but we will get there. There's going to be some trading between, maybe perhaps, maybe the, when I mean trading, I mean, trading of areas, service areas, between counties and cities, getting rid of some of the enclaves, to try to improve those efficiencies. But we all have to work together. I mean, it sounds very cliche and easy to do, but we all have to put our barriers down to building kingdoms and kingdoms and try to just do what's best and be efficient.
Well, has no one ever thought of posing the question, it is not time to do better what is right for the citizens of the community, rather than what is right for these different employees of the community?
Absolutely. I mean, and we.
I mean, that should not take 10 years to consider.
I agree. I agree.
I was just going to say, speaking of fire, when you were trying to sell your bag up there, is the incinerator about paid for? Are we going to quit? That, will we have that five or six million dollars extra? Is this year it's paid off?
Yeah, it's 2014 and it's, yeah, it's coming up.
Oh, so we still have five or six million on that there?
So, we still, well, we still got that 3.5 million subsidy that's going to go toward, towards the gas.
And I was going to say, a lot of those questions you're asking about staff and that sort of thing, you can find that on the C A F R's Certified Financial, Certified Audited, I'm not saying that right.
Financial record.
Certified Audited Financial Report on the clerk's website. And it goes, some of that stuff goes back several years, so you can compare it too.
It's good for us.
About every year, new one.
Sean, I got a question. The, one of the first couple slides you had was the, I believe it was millage that we pay on conservation lands.
Yes.
That were previously purchased.
So.
And, I mean, granted, there was a time when that was a good thing to do when we were growing, you know, but possibly, has anybody looked at not, not maintaining that property and selling it?
Um, well, we, we definitely looked at not maintaining, and in fact, at one of the budget hearings, I said, if, one, one obvious choice would be to delay some of the maintenance, the management of that, to save on costs until it's absolutely necessary to do it. Selling it from what, you know, it's, it was approved by a referendum, so, you know, it's my understanding, at the very least, that we would have to have another referendum to undo all the lands that were purchased with the first referendum, voters' referendum in 2000.
How much land are we talking about? And how much of a piece of the budget?
Well, it was a $30 million bond, that, so it was $30 million worth of land at the time that was expensive, at the time, which was a lot more expensive than it is now. Acreage wise, I don't want to tell you to, I don't want to tell you something that's wrong. I mean, I could get that figure. There's some large properties, a couple Lake May Reserve, there's a couple down in South Lake that are very large, in the middle of the green swamp, which, by the way, is never going to really have any development pressure to it, so I'm not sure how that made much sense to it anyway.
Depends on who owned it.
And we might, though.
I, yeah.
I mean, there's, there's sense of the past, you know, that we get saddled with, and how do we get out of those when we get to a level to where our, our revenue is down here, you know, and our expenses are still up here? I mean, that's the thing that I, I wish we had, and this is a gross generalization for government, but I wish we had an addiction to budgeting as opposed to an addiction to spending. And I think a lot of times, you know, we, we don't, we don't look at the cost cutting that we could actually be doing.
No, you're absolutely right, and I, I will say, I'll give, you know, it's not just me, it's the whole board included. I think we are becoming more aggressive at looking at, at ways to save, quite frankly. Something I did not mention, which is going to be controversial, I'm sure, but we, you know, we are looking at outsourcing our library services. Be very clear, we're not talking about giving up assets. Libraries aren't going to close, or we're giving them away to, but we're talking about outsourcing the labor, the employees. Quite frankly, is to what I've seen so far, be very careful, this is not, I'm not saying this is something that's going to happen for sure, we're looking at this right now. There could be a savings of around $400,000 per year. And into a system that actually has better healthcare than the county provides for the employees, and has actually got a better 401 retirement system. Similar to what Osceola County is looking at right now, or what Osceola County, I'm sorry, actually has implemented, and they have implemented for over a year. And I'm very intrigued by it. I know Commissioner Connor is as well. From what I heard today at a meeting at the Lake 100, where four of us commissioners were together, Commissioner Campion does as well, and so does Commissioner Sullivan. So, we're going to look at it. We have to, we have to look at all options, so.
You should, there's a good presentation on the budgets, but my overall observation is, it was all based upon what the staff wanted you to see. You did not go through line by line on the projects. They came in and said, here's the top three things that we think, knowing that they should cut 6% that can be cut. And so, like, for instance, you have that comp plan, and you helped write that, and it has some 3,000 shall statements in it. And that means that they have to implement all those regulations, and they've got to write them up, which you've got a five-year plan to do. And why don't you just go through and eliminate those shall statements, replace it with may, and then the county can't be sued, and you don't have to implement those things, and then you should roll back. then you should roll back that comp plan and remove a lot of the restrictions that've been put on land throughout this county. Um, and then next is that, uh, the CRAs, the Community Redevelopment Agencies. Uh, you just had a presentation on the proposed Mineola CRA, it's going to float two bonds of about forty million dollars to build that interchange down there, and finance their roads, and pay their own employees, and it includes a state required, uh, a lot, they are allowed, I just verified this, I got the law, I actually had to sit down with the CFO of one of the cities to get it, because I could never get an answer from Sandy Minkoff, and, or Barbara Lehman, about what is the regulation that says that the county has to divert the five mills of tax, property taxes that's for the county, and it's diverted to the CRA. And, uh, you all, right now, you talked about budget shortages, you're paying out a million dollars a year to those, the existing sixteen CRAs in this county, and that this new one is gonna suck an awful lot of money out of the general fund, which is used to pay for the sheriff, for animal services, and everything for everybody in the county, and it's, it's like having a leak, you know, somebody taps into your gas tank and siphons off your money, and I see that going on, and I don't understand why none of you stand up to that and start questioning that, and asking why, and unfortunately, it's apparently state regulation, but then you should be standing up against the CRAs, because they're gonna be pulling all that money out for years to pay for their own roads in that area. And I know Leslie will say, well, it's regional roads, but it's roads to benefit those landowners, and they are not sharing or paying back any of that.
Well, um, let me just say, I know this has, you know, been a big issue for you, of course, but, um, CRAs, uh, Community, Community Redevelopment Agencies, you know, where they take the tax increment as it grows, um, and they apply it to a, towards a geographic area that has a plan for something, are all across the state, and there are some bad ones, absolutely. Many of them are very good. And in this particular case, um, we have a potential for a game changer for economic development in Lake County. We have an interchange that's proposed at the Mineola. Fifteen million dollars, uh, will be provided from the state, um, that we, that's gonna just, it's given to us by the state to, to build that interchange. Fifteen million dollars, yes, will have to come from the CRA. The CRA expenses will only be for, for the transportation portion of that. Once that transportation component is paid off, the, the CRA goes away, that's it.
No, they're paying staff for the growth of services for Mineola, it's right in that plan. It's like millions, it's a million and a half a year, and it goes up to twelve million dollars a year to pay for police and fire and everything else, and that's money that's being sucked out of the general fund for the county, and the, all the rest of the taxpayers.
Well, I, I, I mean, I, I, I'll, I'll check, but I mean, I disagree, I mean, we were very clear that the, the CRA component, it essentially was a, it's a way to, um, fund transportation within a geographic area, and then when it's done, it goes away. I mean, that's one of the methods of funding, alternative trans, alternative funding transportation methods, um, that was recommended by the CFAC Committee, Capital and Civil Advisory Committee. It's basically like a transportation benefit district. And that's essentially what this really is. CRA may not have been a good word for it, I, it is ultimately a CRA, but yes, that, that will be taken care of. It's a game changer, because if we don't do that, the interchange is not gonna happen. There's a million square feet of commercial, uh, industrial that's proposed, and you don't have the, the possibility to attract, uh, businesses, large businesses, to come in, to grow, unless you have an infrastructure, a transportation infrastructure in place. It's just that simple.
Do we know what the, the projected tax revenue is? Is it, I mean, one of those numbers?
There are tables in it.
Yeah, there's tables on it, yeah. I don't, I, I can get those for you, I don't wanna tell you.
But I was wondering, 'cause you haven't mentioned that, Vance, is that, that's the justification for doing it?
Yeah, I mean, it's hundreds of millions of dollars, I mean, it's an additional revenue, I mean, you're, you're talking...
Oh, you're talking about the valuation of the property, yes?
Yes.
The value of prop, the property values will go up, uh, and the increase in the valuation is taxed, and those are the taxes that I'm talking about. And it will generate a significant amount of money over fifteen to twenty-five years. The first bond is gonna be thirty years for twenty-six million dollars. And the problem is also is that they're gonna float a bond issue, and it's, the first one's twenty-six point five million, and of that, twenty-five percent is pulled off the top for fees and prepaid interest, it is not actually used for any hard construction. It's nothing but fees and overhead. And, and I talked to the consultant, and he says, well, that's how they all are, and I, I was like, can you go, would you go out and buy a car and agree to pay twenty-five percent interest, uh, to have it taken right off the top, like points when you buy a house? You know, and, and that's a huge amount, and I don't, and, and there wasn't very much discussion, it's like, well, everybody else has done it, so let's do it. And that's a lot of money that then is being, going out for non-productive use, uh, and, frankly, there, there needs to be a better way. I think they ought to have a property assessment on the real estate, and the landowners don't just walk off with profits, that they have to contribute towards this somehow, and, 'cause there's no impact fees. Because you have no impact fees, there's no money for roads, so this is...
Well, they're going around it.
That's the other part of this, though, we will, we'll actually, 'cause the, the county part of this is, is improving two roads, uh, regionally, that are tiny roads going into this area. So, you know, impact fees will be implemented at thirteen percent, starting January first, anyway, transportation.
That's only thirteen percent of what the consultant says is the true cost of building those roads.
Well, and, and what I've said, and you know this, um, is that in Southlake, especially where we have a large, uh, we're, we're still behind on some of our transportation needs, um, we don't have those funds in place anymore, that, uh, if you can tie specific projects to an impact fee, I think people are more comfortable with that. When you're collecting impact fees, just collect impact fees, then it'd be, then you have more opposition. There are, and you were at the presentation, there are two roads that will be specifically identified, and there's gonna be more, and I encourage you to come on April twenty-third, next Tuesday, when we talk about this more in more detail.
The CRA, you can be questioned.
Uh, yeah, there's two roads, but there'll be other roads around the Southlake region that will also be identified, where if the commission makes a decision to raise impact fees above the thirteen percent, the monies will specifically be identified for those road projects.
So again, it's benefiting just those property owners, and, but you don't have impact fees for the rest of the county, and so that means that they have to pay for roads out of some other tax.
The, the other regions of Lake County could enact higher impact fees if they wanted to, yes, and other commissions might need the effort to do that, in the central and north part of it, of the county. Yes, ma'am?
We're talking about impact fees, but there was an article that came out about, um, the, St. John's River Management, and they're not gonna release any water while these people are gonna get water out there.
Vance asked you to ask that question.
No. I can read.
No.
We just paid twenty thousand dollars for someone to tell us that the lack of rain is what's causing our plants to go down. I mean, I burst out laughing when I read it, it was so ridiculous.
Right. Well, uh, it, I know, and this, this is one of those where it's hard for me, because there's, there's not much I can give you, you know, we, we have gone to bat for the county, I believe, what was it, a year ago, we had the big meeting with St. John's here at the Mission Inn, and we talked about that, and releasing the water levels. Uh, we don't control those structures, the county, um...
Well, we're gonna talk to our guy at Lakeside about, um, our tourist tax dollars, building these things, we're gonna break some land, but, oh, yeah, it's gonna worry us. We're doing something up here, and St. John's already saying, well, they're not gonna give us water, we can't have any more development here, because they're not gonna give us any water.
Yeah, I think the question is, is, you know, can you lower Lake Apopka anymore? And, and, you know, if you lower it a lot, and you'll release more water, uh, north, um, you know, you could lower it to the point that, that where it would take a, a real long time for Lake Apopka to recover. So, you know, I know there's some science, they, they, they have, what's that?
So? That, that's not in our county, most of it.
Well, it was like, like my beginning was that. Uh, but, no, it's, it's, uh, it's very hard for me, because there's, I wish I could do, to do, to do, do more, um, and provide you more, but they control those structures. We can go to bat for you, and we, we ask, you know, we ask, we ask the water authority to look at this and come and talk to us periodically about what's going on. Yeah, it is kind of a no-brainer, we're missing, the big culprit is that we don't have, uh, we haven't had a lot of rain, we've been behind. But, you know, personally, I believe there are some historic alterations that have been made, and it is worth looking at, pursuing those, to see where those alterations in Polk County have affected water flowing north into, in the Clermont chains, um, affecting the Clermont chain lakes as well.
I would just like to say one thing about that, I was at that meeting of the Mission Inn.
Yes.
And the, the Water Management District went through a lengthy presentation, not once did they mention the economic impact...
Yeah.
...of what they were doing. They focused entirely on their environmental conservation concerns as the entire motivation, and that room was full, there was four or five hundred people there, I think. Their ninety-plus percent of those comments were about the economic impact of what they do to water. Once again, we have an, an, uh, agency, right, with unelected bureaucrats, with rulemaking authorities, okay, impacting citizens, you know, and that's, that's what I think we have going on with those guys.
And we haven't had a board member from, from Lake County, uh, I don't, I don't know if ever, but at least a long time, that's for sure, how that fits on that...
I say, I say dethrone them, honest to God.
Sure.
When, when they, when they do what they're doing without any consideration to the economic impact of what they're doing with water, get them out of here. It's totally unbalanced.
Right. And that's unfortunately the, the imbalance that we have with some of these people is, it's all, it's all nature, and no, no living part to it, so...
If they're not elected, how do they get there?
They're paid by the governor.
Because we have statutes, we have statutes that our, our elected representatives in our House Representatives and our Senate have passed down rulemaking authority to these agencies. It happens at the federal level, it happens at the state level. They give the, the Department of Health, the Environmental Protection, a lot of these guys, they, that our elected representatives has given them rulemaking authority. Obamacare is a classic example, a classic example. They gave HHS rulemaking authority, they're making them up as they go along.
Yeah.
And we are supposed to, they think we are supposed to comply.
Yeah.
Right? And I, that's where I, I got a big problem with...
With the DPA, with all those people...
I got a big problem with, with all of this stuff.
Well, twenty-seven years ago, you wanna throw rocks at people? Twenty-seven years ago, the county commissioners of this county voted, passed bonds, built an incinerator to be paid off in twenty years, and when it was paid off, give it back to the damn company. They were to supply so many tons of garbage, and they didn't even know how many tons of garbage they could, could supply. So if you ask me, if county commissioners are competent, they're no worse off than the guys at St. John's. I think we should outsource all of it. If we can save four hundred thousand on the board with the library, look what we can save for the whole rest of it. And you're, you're...
And that county commissioner, I think, left, left midterm and worked for the company.
Oh, I know all about that. I've been talking on those bonds that are between here and Brooklyn.
What I don't understand, though, is why is it that a company can take our libraries and run them more efficiently with better benefits for less money? Why can't we do the same thing?
Well, let me just say, we think, we'll know for sure here, since, we're gonna, we're gonna see their proposals, the devil will be in the details. Um, there are absolutely aspects of government that should be run more like a business. There are some parts of government that will never, you know, be, will never achieve a profit, if you will, there's always gonna be a loss, public safety, uh, you can run as efficiently as possible, there's gonna be a cost, education perhaps, um, the, the key, and I, you know, I hopefully answered your question, is to try, and this board, I think, is gonna do it, all of us, um, is, is to go out and look for every opportunity where we can outsource like that, and it will save, uh, the bottom line, so, and, and we, we just have to be aggressive about it and keep pressing, and yes, there is a status quo and a bureaucracy mentality that has to be, that has to be broken, um, and we just have to keep pushing it. I mean, I do, I, again, I do think this board has been very aggressive at that, and we're not perfect, but we're, we made a lot of changes in the last couple of years.
I'm glad we got what we got.
Here's one process change, that, that, thank you. This is, this is very important, and this is a, a little bit of a sense of pride for me. Grants, when they come in, uh, or major expenditures, believe it or not, before Commissioner Campion and I were in office, there was never any analysis done by staff on what the twenty-five year operational cost would be, what are the strings attached to a grant? Well, now, staff knows that they need to, that, they know that I'm gonna ask that question, what is the twenty-five year analysis, operational cost? It may be great to spend that upfront, it looks like it could be a benefit, just spend that money, but how much is it gonna cost us over twenty-five years? And, uh, the staff does that now. That was not, had not been done before, so, we're getting there.
Thank you, Sean.
Hey, Sean, just help me, MPO, what's, what's the...
The call, the planning, or the...
Okay. Did, did, do they have some negatives, if you, did you guys go on some kind of a conference, and they have some negatives that they shouldn't have, that they have such control over the commissioners, that, that if you guys make a decision, like on a traffic roundabout, to spend one point one million dollars, that, uh, and you turn it down, that the MPO comes back, and, and then all of a sudden, again, it would seem to be, from, based on what you said today, and, and what I would take your principles to be, that it would be against your principles to spend one point one million dollars of borrowed funds from China, when you have three kids at home, they're gonna have to pay that bill. I, I really am lost to figure out why that change took place. And I understand that the word is, well, if we don't spend it here, we'll spend it somewhere else. I see that. Well, then let them violate their principles, but let's us stick up for ours.
Well, I, I agree, and I think, I think that's a, a, the debate around that has been, been healthy, I mean, I will tell you that. I did vote for it, uh, and I'll tell you why. Uh, and, and the reason why is because, um, first, let me start with a little bit of history. Even before I was elected, uh, and Commissioner Campion was, there were three bridges in Lake County, that, remember the ARR money that came in from Obama, President Obama, uh, it was put out, they put this money forward to do, uh, to, for transportation projects, okay? Well, we had some bridges, a couple like Bibzio's one, um, where they needed, we're gonna need repair, and they didn't need it immediately, um, they, nonetheless, were gonna need, need repair. We identified those as projects, just like we identified the roundabout as, the intersection of the roundabout as, as a future project, that, an intersection that was gonna need to be changed. That commission voted, and they, they accepted that money to change, to repair those bridges. There's one in, in Northlake, there's one in Southlake that was down at twenty million dollars a pop. If we had said, for, you know, let's wait a couple more years, let's not take the federal money on that, um, that would've had to come out of, uh, a general fund, or we would've had to have bonded, bonded, paid with it, with that penny sales tax, uh, to do it a few years down the road, which was gonna need to be done anyway. That intersection was...
Let, let me say, I, I have to take my wife over to Clermont at least once a week, frequently. And when I look at how those, where pork chops are done with two-way traffic on them, that's an accident looking for a place to happen, seems to me there's some other solutions other than a roundabout, that, that, the roundabout, to me, is totally unnecessary. If, if there were some traffic engineering done, and maybe even a light put there, not a stoplight, but a warning light...
The traffic, uh, to improve that, that, um, intersection with a traffic signal, and to do, redo turn lanes would've been about seven hundred thousand dollars. Out of, out of, again, we could've, too, laid, waited on that project, and spent that seven hundred thousand dollars a few years down the road, out of our general fund or borrowed against it. Um, the twenty-five year operational cost that I mentioned is cheaper for the roundabout than it is for a light. I mean, flat out showed to you. So, you know, that was one of the reasons, the first time I voted against it was because staff had not provided that data, and I said, I'm not voting for it, I'm, I'm on the record. I'm not voting for it unless, you know, you can demonstrate, and I need, I need hard proof that operationally it's gonna be cheaper and it makes sense, it's safer. It is? We had engineers that attested that. The same engineers that attested, we didn't need a traffic light at Summit Greens, but yet we had people, we had commissioners... yet we had people, we had commissioners insisting that we put one there when a warrant was not, was, did not merit that. So, um, we base, public safety decisions, I do, based off the data they give us. These engineers, the PEs, professional engineers, they put their license on the line. I, I will yield to their advice, I do not wanna make issues like that, political, traffic lights and things. I go off of what their data says, if it's gonna make it safer, then that weighs heavily into my decision. And so, that was why, that was why I voted for that, for that roundabout, so, that's what changed, so.
Just a quick comment on that. When I was in Australia for an extended period of time, a lot of roundabouts are very, very effective, if, but my only question is, God, that, you know, you're talking about building eight or 10 homes for the cost of that roundabout, and that seems like an awful lot of money for engineering and design and traffic flow analysis. It just seems to me, all these transportation projects, and we're not talking about flyover here, we're talking about these frickin' roundabouts. I mean, it's, it's not rocket science, the concept is there. And so, I mean, I'm just looking at the, the price tag for it seems excessive.
It is excessive. The price tag for that intersection in general was gonna be excessive. Yeah, it's 1.1 versus 700,000. There is a difference there, obviously, but it's expensive.
But see, once again, you're assuming there are only two answers.
Right. Well, no, the other answer is we could leave it alone.
Yeah. Matter of fact, didn't we have a vote on that at the last meeting?
Actually, it could, it could be left alone, but it's, it's very, it's very nearing, nearing a warrant, of becoming a safety issue. We have actually had fatalities there, free fatalities.
You have those every day all over.
True, absolutely.
Why waste money, why waste that money?
We're, we're, we're supposed to be, we're supposed to be open to this, it's fine. Um, yeah, we do have, we do have fatalities all over the place, you're, you're absolutely right. Uh, we, we had three specifically at that intersection. So, you know, obviously, with the way, the engineers look at this again and say, you've had three fatalities, uh, huge influx of potential, Commissioner Campion pointed it out very well, you're gonna have more traffic coming through there, you're gonna increase the percentage of traffic accidents that will occur. So, it would have to be addressed. Yeah, it could be, we could wait, you know, two more years.
Well, you should wait.
But, but again, if we waited, then, when we need to improve it, we would have to spend 700,000, probably 700,000.
Maybe things will change in two more years, maybe.
Well, I know, you sold the value, so, I don't think it'll be that.
You guys wanna let him go, you wanna keep beating him up for once? You got a lot?
I guess some sense of the good if you want it.
Good in the order?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll let Sean wrap up.
I'll, I'll be here, you can ask your questions, and, and absolutely, I've enjoyed, enjoyed this, um, would love to come back. And what I also wanted to conclude by saying, I absolutely love what I do. I wake up thankful for the opportunity to serve. Um, even when I have my bad days, go to bed, I'm thankful for the opportunity I have, and what I learned, um, and I just wanted to let you know that, that I, I enjoy serving you. Um, yeah, we might have, we might have issues we disagree on, um, but I really do obviously wanna make the county better, so. I'm trying to be the most accessible commissioner, at least for Southlake that there has ever been. I have all kinds of opportunities, like coffee conversations, or I meet with Todd Howard, my mayor's call, where I get all the mayors of Southlake on, on the phone, and we share information every month. Workshops. If you go to my website, seanslake.com, I try to update people on when I'm having those opportunities. So please, feel like you can come, come to those, even though it's down in Southlake, we'd love to, love to see you down there, so. And please have me back, so.